We'll call an order of the Benton County Board of Commissioners, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Beth, roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen, here. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
All right. Approve or amend the agenda, Monty?
We have no changes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Roberts' rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones and/or turn them on vibrate, thank you. Before we get to the open forum, our last agenda item is going to be on the auditor treasure, and that will not be open for public discussion, so if anybody's here for that item under public discussion can do it on the open forum. At this time, we will do the open forum, public input and/or information matters not requiring action on the board. So now it's the time for anyone to come and speak in front of us.
Mr. Chair, I'm Mike Lewandowski, and then Pam Foss. Mike is first, so Mike signed up first. Oh Pam, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning Pam.
I'm Pam Foss, I'm an employee and a social worker here at Benton County, I'm also a county resident. I'm here this morning to let the board know about the senior social worker positions that have been rolled out and how they personally affected me. I know that the board has stated that they value long-term employees, and this is just one example how I feel that we're not being treated as valued employees. I have talked briefly with Commissioner Johnson, and he was not aware how this rollout would affect employees or really much about how this process is happening. In my case, I've been employed with the county for almost 22 years, but my anniversary date is in May. Because of the rollout with the class and comp study, which was in July, I have not yet reached my anniversary date. I was offered a position as a senior social worker because I am number seven on the seniority list, but I would need to remain at step eight, and I would remain there for 17 months. Since I would not get a step since last May, and they're saying my anniversary date would now change until next February. So, for me, if I wait until July, which is something that they have said that I possibly can do, it would also mean that I go down to number 20 in seniority, and right now I'm at number seven, which people that have been here for five years would now be ahead of me in seniority in my job classification. So one example I have is one social worker that started in 2009, his anniversary date happens to be in October. He's already making more than me because he received a step increase, and now he is being offered grade 10, step 10, where I'm being offered grade 10, step 8. And he will have nine years less years of service. And I just don't feel that, I feel like I have eight more anniversary dates than him, so that just doesn't seem fair to me that, you know, we're looking at just totally when your anniversary date is. There's another social worker that started two months after me, so her date is after July 1st. She was also being offered grade 10, step 10, because it's after January 1st. I just feel this policy, they say that the minimum is 5.5% increase, but that is the minimum. They say that there's nothing else we can do, they being administration, I'm guessing that would be a question. But I feel like there's two of us out of 20 that this affects, that our anniversary date is between March 1st and July 1st, and I just feel like it could be looked at differently, because I am having a hard time going down in seniority in my job classification down to 20 after 22 years. So I just feel like I'm seemingly, I was hired in the wrong month, and that is affecting me for a long time, which obviously it has for other comp studies, but this one, when it's a double whammy and it's two steps, is a kind of a big deal, so, thank you.
Thank you Pam.
Thank you Pam.
Next, Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Mike Lewandowski, 11709 85th Avenue Northeast, Foley. Just here today to thank the board for taking the matter of the auditor treasures situation seriously, and to also thank, I guess, the local media for making it finally public, because there's a lot of people that had no clue what was going on. Offering support for myself and the area that I live in, for whatever action the board has to take to bring it to some resolution. I think Sherburne County did a great job with their investigation. Went through it, and to see, you know, that they pulled cellphone records to track where this elected official was spending their time, I think that's amazing. And according to the investigator, it was pretty obvious where she was spending her time. I don't quite understand what else was needed by Sherburne County to take it to the next level. I guess maybe someone from this board or from Sherburne County at some point should ask the county attorney's office, or the attorney that reviewed it, and say, what more would you need to prove the elements of this statute, of this crime? Because when you read it, it's pretty obvious, it really is. Short of doing continuous surveillance, I guess, that would be one way, but when you have documented records from a cellphone placing this person at one location, it's beyond me. But at any rate, I just want to thank the board and hope that you use whatever resources are necessary. I know there's a lot of things, I've gone into it already, time, various board members have spent a lot of time looking at this, so we appreciate that, to hold this person accountable. If you don't have faith in your elected officials, you kind of go downhill, and I think that's where we're at right now. A lot of people don't have faith not only in the person and in the position, but also in the system, where you can have this kind of investigation and then still get charges declined. So if that's the case, and if nothing could be turned around, if nothing else could be presented to Sherburne County, that's going to change their mind, then I guess it's up to the board to do the right thing. And the public, from what I know, around my community supports you in doing what you have to do. And I hope it's a quick resolution. Yes, that's it, thank you.
Thank you Mike.
Thank you Mike. Just for clarification, this was a joint effort, it just wasn't one or two board members, just for clarification.
I have some limited knowledge, so again, I appreciate the whole board and what you're doing and continue to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, nobody else? Oh, we have one more.
You guys recognize me?
Barely.
I'm actually from Monticello, so I don't know.
What's your name, sir?
For the record, I'm Jacob, with the Benton County News. I know that in, I think you said that it was going to closed session for that conversation about the auditor treasure?
Not closed session, it's going to be open, I'm just not going to let the audience speak.
I see, okay, good to go.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, with that moving forward, consent agenda items one through nine, what would we like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or clarification needed? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Roxanne Ackman, land service director, consider a resolution setting a deadline for the Platts expected to be recorded by year end.
All right, good morning commissioners, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, the end of 2021 brought an abundance of Platts to be recorded in a matter of two weeks' time. As we know, that is a busy time for all offices, in addition to, it's a time that a lot of staff are out for vacations and different holiday reasons. And so, what I'd like to present after discussions with all of the departments that do touch the Platts, so that's our county highway department, county surveyor, auditor treasurer, recorder, attorney's office. There's been a lot of discussion about the stress that these Platts put on their offices and their staff, when they're brought in at the very end of the year and expected to be recorded by the final hour of that year. So, the reason that a lot of people push to have their Platts recorded before the end of the year is because taxes have already been paid on them for that year, with the last being in, I think it's October or November, their taxes are paid in full for that tax year. So, when somebody Platts, taxes are due in full. So if you, if that Platts recorded January 1 of 2022, you now have to pay the 2022 taxes in full. And that, people don't like doing that. So, we've had a lot of discussions with the local surveyors as well, and they are put under a lot of pressure if the county is continuing to accept Platts those last few weeks of the year. And they would support this resolution and this policy. So what we'd like to do is set some deadlines that would require Platts to be submitted at least two weeks prior to the end of the year. And that means the milers are submitted, all documents that are needed are submitted two weeks prior to the end of the year, with action occurring from the county board at the first meeting in December, so that we can get these completed without the stress that's what's occurring for staff right now. Is there any questions on this policy? Yes?
I heard you say two weeks before the end of the year, or?
So, let's see. For simple Platts shall be submitted to the county no later than two weeks prior to the last business day of the calendar year.
I don't know about you guys, but in my book, that don't even seem like enough time to allow staff to get it done.
It's tight.
I mean, maybe you need to look at three or four weeks.
So with a simple Plat, so if they submit those milers and all of the documents, that's the problem. We get, maybe we get a Plat, and then the documents come in a couple of days later, or they're submitting the Plat literally three days before the end of the year. This year was a little bit of, a little bit of chaos, there was a lot of Platts. I don't think we generally have that many Platts. But we would certainly be open to a greater timeframe. So it's two weeks for the simple Plat, that does not come to the county board, that is approved administratively. The minor and major subdivisions are a little bit differently, so minor would have to be approved by the county board no later than the first regular board meeting in December. And then required documents no less than three weeks prior to the last business day. And those are, because those are reviewed by the county board, they're approved by the county board at a public hearing, and there's more than one lot to review on anything that's a minor or a major.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Roxanne, just one question, item three, submitted by the above dates does not guarantee that Plat will be recorded by year end. Is it possible for you to move the date backwards to guarantee it being done?
I can't guarantee anything.
Okay.
And the reason being is that if the documents come in and they're in error, we can't do anything about that, and we don't want to put any guarantee that something's going to be recorded when we're not getting the appropriate information.
Yep, fair enough.
And that tends to be an issue that, for some reason, becomes our problem, whether they can't get the consent to Plat from their mortgage company. It's just that the clients are not, they're not pursuing these in a timely manner, and they're thinking that they can get Wells Fargo to give them a consent to Plat in a week, and it's taking 45 days.
Sure. Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
I'll just do a question.
Okay. Commissioner Schlangen?
What if we say by the end of November, they need to have that process going and have their information submitted, and then the rest of it can be done by the county to make, to get everything so they can finalize?
So rather than putting two weeks or three weeks out there, the end date is just the end of November?
For the people to submit to you.
It's a possibility.
And then you have that month to work it out, to try to get it done.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner Schlangen, the problem with that is, is that there's too many other parties that Land and Development doesn't have control over, even by moving it back to the 30th. I think there's too many other parties, like especially the people who are trying to do it. I mean, if stuff is submitted in error, moving it back to the 30th won't do anything. Right?
It's really kind of a guessing game as to what, you know, if materials are going to be submitted in a timely fashion.
A lot of the process has been going previous to that anyway. You know, they've all been submitted prior to that.
Yeah.
It's just double checking everything and making sure.
And we didn't want to be unreasonable.
No.
So.
And I think you're very reasonable on a simple Plat as an administrative deal, so you go up two weeks in there.
Yeah, that seems pretty reasonable.
And the other major and minor stuff is due by the first board meeting of the month.
Yep.
And it really just depends on the complexity of the situation. We have Platts that'll come in, and it's as easy as getting them approved in two days, because they're very simple Platts, there's no errors on the titles, there's no liens on the property, there's no mortgage on the property, it really depends on what's all involved. Is there easements for pipelines, you know, it's, there's just so many different things with each one that you really don't know what you're getting into until that title work comes in.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, especially you, Commissioner Johnson, but even the minor, major, sub Platts got to go in front of the planning commission anyway in November.
Yep, exactly.
Before it comes to us regardless, all that stuff has to be in place, in process, before it even gets to us, so that's why.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, I'll recommend that we set a resolution, a resolution setting the deadlines for the Platts expected to be before year end, on what has appeared before us today.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Roxanne.
You're welcome.
Thanks Roxanne.
Next, Sheriff Troy Heck, approve contract for AIM for electronic medical record systems in the jail.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the highlights of this item for you today, back on February 1st, we signed the contract for ACH to be our medical provider in the jail, and as an aside, they're a little more than two weeks in, and I checked in with jail administration today, and things are going very well with that transition, so we are off to a good start with them and look for a continued positive relationship. So part of our responsibility in providing health care to our inmates is that we have to keep track of what we've done. An electronic medical record system is the standard these days to keep track of that information. ACH has a relationship with a company they call AIM, Advanced Inmate Medical Management. This company produces an electronic medical record system. It's the same people that run ACH run AIM, so they're very familiar with each other. It's written to be their system, it's what they're most familiar with, and it's how they can most efficiently deliver services to us. So, in pursuing ACH as our jail medical, we pursued AIM as our EMR provider. We've negotiated some terms with ACH that include us paying $14,392.65 in one-time costs in 2022. We were able to get a 0% increase for three years on the annual fee that goes along with that, and then a 3% increase in 2025. So our annual fees will go from $10,459.38 to $10,773.16 only in 2025, so we're happy about that. The one issue that was identified by Michelle Meyer is the coverage for cyber liability. It's below what is recommended. As I noted in my agenda item form, our options in this realm are pretty limited. And I think if we're going to get the best service out of ACH, going with the EMR that they are most familiar with is going to give us that best opportunity. So, bring this before the board with recommendation that we move forward with the contract and get the AIM EMR into our jail. Any questions?
No. Monty, so, this has come up numerous times and just not with Sheriff Troy Heck in the jail. When did we change our coverage from 1 to 1.5 mil?
About 10 years ago, the legislature increased the governmental tort limits. It was kind of a compromise, there used to be this concept where if you sued two governmental entities, they were stacking those together, so the legislature limited the stacking, but then they increased the tort limit. And apparently, typically, this insurance is purchased in million-dollar increments, so it's really tough to go from 1 to 1.5, and apparently that increment is often quite expensive. So we often hear that from, you know, companies are saying, hey, it's really expensive to get that extra $500,000. This has been an issue ever since the tort limits were raised, it comes up all the time.
Yeah, and I know it's always come up here in front of the board, ever since I've been on the board too.
And the caution, of course, you know, is that you possibly then have some uninsured exposure if the insurance is not covering the governmental tort limit. In other words, that's a cap on what governments can be sued for. So, there have been instances where the board has accepted, you know, something less. It's, you kind of have to weigh the risks and the rewards. And what options, what other options do you have?
Right.
Right. So.
Michelle, can you give us some more info, or?
I think Monty did a good job of describing what's going on. The one thing I would also let you know is that they do have to comply with the same requirements that we do for high-tech and HIPAA, which means that they have to have certain security provisions placed in their technology. So that is an additional safety feature that they have to comply with that as well.
It just said we got that $500,000 exposure.
Yeah, we got.
Thank you, Michelle.
I don't really see a lot of issue with this, I know we've done this on several occasions prior to this.
Right.
So I think it's well worth, and I'd like to commend the sheriff on the contract. I think the contract's really good that we got no increase and then a 3% in 2025.
Yep.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to commend you for that.
I also like to put a shout out to Michelle, she does an excellent job of helping with that.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
I know it's been a tough, probably, five months on this, so, thank you, guys. I would, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the AIMM and direct the chair to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussions or questions on this? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Next. Monty, adopt the resolution to appoint Brian R. Folden as Benton County Assessor.
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to present the recommendation of the assessor selection committee, and that was Commissioner Kapinski, Commissioner Heinon, Roxanne, and Johanna, and also Steve Berenbrinker, our interim county assessor. So back on February 14th, the selection committee interviewed some individuals and reached a consensus on Mr. Brian Folden. Let me give you a quick bio on Brian. He's currently the chief deputy assessor for Wadena County, he's been in that role since 2015. Before that, he was a appraiser, tax officer 3 with Polk County from 2012-14, and then before that, he worked for a title company, so experienced in the title industry. He has a bachelor's degree in business administration from North Dakota State University. And very importantly, of course, he possesses the Senior Accredited Minnesota Assessor certification, which is required to be a county assessor in Minnesota. So we're asking this morning if you could approve the resolution, and I should note that the terms of all county assessors in Minnesota are the same. So current terms for county assessors end December 31st of 2024. So we're asking you to appoint him for the balance of that term, and then he would be eligible then in 2025 for a new four-year term. By statute, assessors are eligible for appointment to a four-year term. So, that's the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Monty. Questions?
So, Monty, you said that they're eligible for a four-year term, does that mean the county has to give them a four-year term, or can we do less? You can do less if they don't possess the SAMA certification upon appointment. The statute allows you to make a provisional appointment for two years, and then they have two years to obtain the SAMA. Otherwise, it's a four-year.
Four-year term, gotcha.
Yep.
And he already has the SAMA certificate, so.
And I, from what I heard from the two commissioners, comes pretty highly recommended. Yes.
Yes.
Excellent references, background checks was good, everything good to go, and his expected start date is March 14th, so coming up soon.
Wow. I can't thank Steve enough for sitting on the process.
Yeah.
Monty, what was his last, how do you pronounce his last name?
I'm pronouncing it Folden.
No, no, no.
Berenbrinker.
Berenbrinker. Excuse me? Berenbrinker.
Yeah, Berenbrinker, there we go.
It just flows.
Yeah. It doesn't flow to me, so, flow for me, so, I can't thank him enough.
Steve Beeden.
Yep.
We've used him twice now, and he's really served the purpose.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I thank him for stepping in and taking the interim and then helping us through this process, I think.
Yep, it was a very good process.
So looking for a motion, if you're inclined to appoint Mr. Folden.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution appointing Brian R. Folden as a Benton County Assessor for the remaining term, March 14th, 2022, to December 31st, 2024, subject to Minnesota Department of Revenue approval and authorization, and authorize the county board chair to sign.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Great.
Monty, you still up? We'll present the next item.
Oh, consider the request to recruit a new human service safety administrator position. Johanna, once again.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
Yes, I am here today to request the consider of starting the recruitment process for the human resources safety administrator position. It's follow-up to our committee of the whole discussion we had on 2/15. Some of you had asked for it to come back to today's meeting, I had sent, I did send Commissioner Kapinski the documentation that we did go through in that meeting, so I just kind of leave it if you guys have any questions from there.
I just want to thank you for the clarification of all of the areas.
You're welcome.
That some of us might not know of.
Yep.
You know, things that you're dealing with. Any questions for Johanna?
Is this just a, Mr. Chair, is this just a mutual consent? We don't need no board action on this, we just?
Technically, it was approved in the budget.
It was approved, correct, in the budget.
But I mean, we don't, we just, you know, as the consent, we can just say, yeah, go ahead. If that's what you're comfortable with, that works for us, it's really up to you all. And that's a good point, it was approved as part of the budget, so it's authorized, so to speak, already.
Mr. Chair, there was consensus at the call.
Yep. Yep.
So I'll ask the question, is everybody in consensus with this position? Beth? Everybody?
Yep. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And I'm assuming you started the process already?
I'm hoping to have it posted by tomorrow, yes. We've been working on it, so thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Johanna.
Thank you. Okay, Monty, phase one, environmental study.
Well, the board authorized the completion of a so-called phase one study on the property across the street from us, the side of the old Foley High School. And we have with us Samantha Schmidt from Brown InterTech, and I see Samantha is with us. Samantha, if you'd like to unmute yourself, and at this point, I'd just like, the phase one, of course, is in your packet. And I'd invite Samantha to please just take us right through it, the floor is yours, Samantha, thanks.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Yeah, we completed a phase one site, environmental site assessment of the property across from, to the south of the municipal building. Historically, I did have some aerial photos which are part of the phase one, but I'll just kind of quickly discuss it. So the site had been developed with several different municipal and school public-type facilities in the southeast 1930s. There was additions added to the school building, property from between 1950 and 1960. By 2003, the site was completely razed and vacant. Substantial debris and superficial disturbance was noted throughout the noted portion of the site in two thousand eight. Then by two thousand and ten, the site had was a vacant grass covered lot and has been since that time. Our research of the different regulatory databases found that that there was, the site was listed on several different state and federal databases, which included two identified releases. The first release was MPCA leak site number forty one seventy. It consisted of a diesel and gasoline release discovered on June twenty fourth, nineteen ninety one. However, upon further review of the MPCA file, which is discussion, which is initially discussed discussed in section B four of the base one, we were able to determine that that release was actually associated with the Foley School located to the the north of the site, the the new school. So that was ruled out as being a concern, given the distance from the the property in question and the groundwater flow direction, which is assumed to be to the south, southeast. However, the second release identified at the site, it was leak site fourteen five oh seven. It consisted of fuel oil number one and fuel oil number two. It was discovered on October twenty third, two thousand one. It was discovered during demolition activities when the earthquake contractor hit an unknown underground storage tank which had product in it. According to database, database reports, the product was pumped from the tank. Contaminated soils were excavated from the area surrounding the tank. MPCA granted file closure in October of two thousand and two. We did request an MPCA file review, however, which is not typical. The MPCA was not able to locate any of the files in the MPCA database library. However, the technical staff was able to provide a statement saying that Scott Johnson with the school system was completing the site demolition. Came across two ten thousand gallon fuel oil U S Ts, which is underground storage tanks, that he did not know were there, associated with the former school. They removed approximately fifteen yards that was stockpiled on site. Hired a consultant who reported that an additional hundred and ten cubic yards were removed and land built at the Superior Land Bill. And finally, on in September of two thousand two, a file of two hundred and nine cubic yards of contaminated soil were removed from the site. In October of two thousand two, site closure was settled. And additionally, Monty was able to provide the or provide us with a project explanation letter from Apex Environmental, which the letter did state that the site had been adequately adequately investigated to determine the magnitude and extent. However, that closure doesn't necessarily mean that all of the contamination has been removed or that subsequent liability is not there for potential purchasers of the site. Rather, it just says that it's been investigated to the extent it may do. And therefore, in future development with that site, with the site, we would want to enroll into the MPCA Brown School Program, develop a response action plan that describes how impacted soils, groundwater, and vapor would be addressed during, addressed and managed during future development. There was also an investigation diagram included within the letter. Based on the available information, we determined that that there was a recognized environmental condition, which is that the site had been, had had a release that was adequately addressed, investigated, enclosed. But however, at that time in two thousand and two, MPCA did not have vapor intrusion guidance, which wasn't developed by the MPCA until twenty sixteen. Therefore, the vapor intrusion was not addressed or investigated during previous site investigations. And so that's considered a recognized environmental condition. And then there's a controlled recognized environmental condition, which is the actual site closure, which is the soil and residual soil and groundwater that will need to be maintained if future development occurs at the site.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
Samantha, Commissioner Johnson, I happen to be that Scott Johnson in your report. Just a couple of comments. Is there record from the duty officer that was called at the time of that contamination? If I recall, it was Jim Fenice from First Fuel Banks. That would be included in any documentation. If I recall correctly, that site, the tank that was hit was during demolition. And we came to an immediate halt at that, and and the duty officer was called in, and that tank was pumped. I guess I don't recall any leaching of that material from, with the exception out of the tank area. It, I think you're correct in those number of yards. That sounds correct because that that yardage was actually piled on the site for a while uncovered before it was hauled off. So but I I guess my question is, is there any other records from the duty officer that would fill in what we're missing from MPCA? And with that said, when the demolition was done, the school district at the time, obviously, we wanted to make sure we weren't in a bond issue with the excavator and that everything was finished, so that that site was actually cleaned up, footings, anything else that would have been potentially under the soil. So I I believe historically that part was done. But what I'm hearing you say is the phase two would have to actually determine all of that.
So the phase two would be focused on the vapor, which would not have been investigated previously and was not investigated previously based on available documents. And so they just didn't have that requirement at the time. And if you look at, if you look at that, that letter of explanation from Apex Environmental, it's also that was hired in back in two thousand and one. It specifically called out that vapor mitigation should be considered in any future developments. And so the duty officer is basically calling the report to to them, but they aren't actually, it it then from there is assigned an MPCA project manager.
Okay.
And that that is who makes determinations of site closure and also maintains copies of those records, which, again, it's not typical that they are not able to find the copies of the records. So that is, that is strange, and then it did happen. Double check, and unfortunately, they were not able to find them. However, with at least the map that was provided in that letter of explanation, does indicate that there is residual soil, residual contamination remaining on the site.
Okay.
And it was not all excavated out.
I guess it surprises me a little bit that twenty years ago, MPCA would have turned their back or their their head on that and not been finished. I mean, because we went through petrofund dollars and everything else to have soils taken care of. And and it just surprises me that they wouldn't look at the vapor part of it.
So vapor wasn't known to be a high risk item at that time. It, they didn't know what sort of health impacts it had on humans. It wasn't.
Sure.
It 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 was something that, you know, was being addressed as far as utilizing a photo Y ionization detector, so a P I D, so field readings. So basically smelling the bottles, but now that they they have developed more more efficient analytical, that we're able to actually analyze concentrations to the parts per million, parts per billion, actually. And so it's much more efficient, it's much more regulated. They actually have regulatory guidance and set limitations within the state of Minnesota that they that has to meet, which they just didn't have that back in two thousand and one.
Sure, fair enough, fair enough. Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
So. Well, I I think one of our goals, Mr. Chair, this morning was some discussion about whether or not it's appropriate to move to a phase two. And if that is, perhaps Samantha could describe for us what what is involved in a phase two, and then perhaps moving beyond that. If you discover soils that are concerned, what would possibly be the next course of action?
Thank you for that clarification, Monty.
Yeah, so at least two would be some surface investigation. We would focus on the soil vapors at the site. Since we're already out there with the drill rig, we would recommend grabbing a couple soil samples and or groundwater if they are encountered. That will tell you, so petroleum is known to degrade over time, and since it has been twenty years since the release, we would want to see what current conditions are without having a proposed building footprint. We, we would limit it to the area of known concern and then focus on the vapor. And so once we get the results, we can compare them to regulatory criteria and determine if soils and or groundwater, if they need to be regulated or can be unregulated. So regulated would mean that they would have to go to a certified landfill. And unregulated means that the soils could be reused to basically anywhere you wish, whether it's Joe on Sparfield or whatnot. And then from the vapor aspect, so it, we would determine if there is a vapor area of concern. And if there is, what is done is it's it's a vapor mitigation system, which is very similar to a radon mitigation system. If you guys are familiar with that, basically perforated piping connected to some solid rigid piping with that's hooked to a vacuum. And then it basically vacuums the vapors from beneath the slab and exposes them out into the exterior of the building into the atmosphere. And so it basically takes away the the potential for those vapors to migrate into the interior of the building. And it it's possible that there isn't an issue at all. And so i- in the event that we go out there, we don't find any soil, groundwater, or vapor contamination, no further action is needed. In the event that there is residual contamination at at or above action levels based on Minnesota regulatory criteria, then we would recommend that you join that Minnesota Brown School Program, which is a voluntary program, but they do provide liability assurances, response action plan. So when you do go to develop the site, you have a plan in place, like saying that, okay, we know that this this area of the site is contaminated when you encounter it. Here's our plan of what we're going to do with it. We're going to take it to this landfill. We've already having pre-approved a landfill disposal, and then we would have to stockpile it offsite, things of that sort. So basically, it has a plan. You submit that to the MPCA, they approve that plan, and then you do the work in accordance with that. And then submit a implementation report for approval. And then it 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 offers a liability protection, saying that, yep, you did everything right.
Mr. Chair, Samantha, would we still be eligible for petrofund dollars if we had contaminated soil?
No, so petrofund is limited to the investigation, not for redevelopment.
Okay. Okay, but with that, would that be towards the investigation of phase two? I mean, does that count for investigation?
No, it only counts for what is required by the MPCA. Since the site is closed out and the the MPCA isn't requiring the site to have any further investigation, petrofund would not require it.
Okay, thank you.
Samantha, I see on here it's it's five soil borings, and that'll be done around that area. Are all five of them done around that area, the the past contaminated area?
Yep, so what I did is I overlay that previous investigation that was completed. I did one within the what we consider the worst case area, which was kind of the center of where the tanks were located. And then radial boring around that area, just beyond what they had shown as the extent of concern. Yep, okay, anything with, so anything beyond that is clean, anything within this area would would not be as bad, as that worst case were, does that make sense? So it basically gives you, okay, this is what the worst case is. Anything outside that perimeter is going to be below that.
Thank you.
Or within that perimeter will be below that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Samantha, maybe I missed this. I I see it's eleven thousand for the for the phase two. But in the phase two, would we, would we, let you say something, we found a bunch of stuff. Would there be approximate costs given to us on what that would be to remedy?
It would depend on what your development plans are. And so just like the requirements within the initial investigation, there it is allowed for contamination to remain in place as long as it's not a risk to humans. And so a receptor, I guess I should say. So depending on what is needed for your geotechnical, so basically you're removing soils from the site and they are contaminated, they will need to go offsite to a certified landfill. There is, there is options to reuse contaminated soils on site within that approved response action plan, like underneath tape surfaces and things like that, even within grain space below an applicable layer, approved layer. But as far as you, typically, you don't ever have to remove everything. And so, but we can give some generalized costs in, say that if there's a vapor mitigation system, it's typically, you know, in the range of three to seven dollars per square foot of the building to put in that vapor mitigation system and to do all of the necessary testing in order to get you your closure and liability assurances from the MPCA. And then we can give approximations of per tonnage costs that the landfill will require. Typically, don't include trucking costs. That would be something that would be dead out at the time of the construction bits.
Commissioner Pop.
Well, I, yeah, what you hear is the eleven thousand dollars to spend to go to the next phase. But if the next phase says that there has to be more done, I am inclined to wash our hands and get out of this deal because I am not going to get into any kind of environmental hauling away soils, cleaning up a contamination where if if it's there, that's up to the previous owner.
And that is correct, and that's.
There's, you know, so even on spending the eleven thousand dollars is probably a little bit more than I'd like to spend. We've already spent some money on that than what I'd like to spend to see where we're going with this. But I don't think there's any need to discuss what we're going to do in the future.
Right.
To see if there's anything in there. This could become a very expensive lot to own if they find anything in there. And I don't know, that's where I'd go with this.
Commissioner Pop, and I agree, but then the liability would go on the the owner of the property.
Well, it'd be his property. If he chooses not to clean it up, he chooses not to clean it up.
Right.
Yeah, and we've made it to Mr. Sabana that any purchase is contingent upon.
Yep.
No contamination, a rezoning, so if the contamination is discovered, then well, it's stop and discuss and then.
So I think I think the only thing that we have to worry about here today is that if we're going to spend eleven thousand bucks to go further on the deal, I don't think we need to have any kind of discussion on what we're going to do if there is contamination on there because I will not go forward on that part whatsoever, on the cleanup part. I think Mr. Sabana would have to take care of that himself.
I think we owe it to ourselves to at least go the eleven thousand and and find out, because it is a great spot if it's not contaminated.
I agree. It's in my mind, up to this point, it's still a very high priority spot, and then we find out what the results are.
What did we have in the current study? How many dollars?
Like four.
I'm sorry, I don't recall.
I want to say twenty five hundred.
I recall, well, somewhere between two to three thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This initial phase.
It's under four.
I mean, so you're looking at twelve thousand five hundred roughly. That's not a lot of money to make sure we are safe to go forward. But from here on forward, I would have a hard time supporting.
I, from my opinion, the the priority of the site to date is justification to spend this money.
Twelve thousand five hundred, yeah.
Yep, and I would have to agree with that. We're we're in this process now. We've got to see it through first. We've got to see it through first to see if there's any further contamination.
Yep. Yep. Do we need a motion?
Uh, yes, we do.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to, uh, go ahead with the, uh, recommended phase two study of this property as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Wow, we're running behind. At this time, I'll turn it over to, uh, the Human Su- Human Services Board Chair, Scott Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Heinand. We'll call to order our Human Services Board. Um, any changes to our agenda, Bob?
No.
Okay. We have a motion to approve it?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve our agenda as presented. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move into our consent agenda items. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve our consent agenda items, one through three. Anyone like anything pulled, questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that's carried. Bob, any updates?
Just have one thing. Jaclyn's here to give you an update on COVID.
Great, thank you. Jaclyn, go ahead, please.
Great, thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
And it's, um, someone could give me the presenter mode on the screen. I didn't share my screen.
Oh, Monty just.
Beth, can you do that?
I'll try.
All right.
Be careful.
Work in progress here. Another learning, another learning curve, Beth.
Is it under screen? Oh, she needs presenter. I should watch you.
Oh, we, you need to share screen?
Boy, it's good to know I'm useful for something.
You're, you're reading our minds, Monty.
Okay, Jaclyn, you, you're in charge.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, let me just move this little box out of the way there. Okay, um, so we'll start here with just the situation update for our county. Um, the information that I'm presenting today is as of yesterday, February twenty eighth. Uh, I just would like to note that the at-home test kits and other sources of testing not reported to the Minnesota Department of Health are not included in these numbers. However, it is the best information we have at this time, while it's still likely an undercount for the tests and the cases. Um, as of yesterday, we had fifty-six active cases of COVID nineteen. We are at thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six total cases. That's an addition of thirty-nine new cases being added to the dashboard. Five hundred and sixty-four total hospitalizations, which includes an additional ten hospitalizations. Uh, ninety-eight total ICU hospitalizations, which includes three new ICU hospitalizations being added to our dashboard. And one hundred and sixty-eight total deaths, which is the addition of three COVID nineteen-related deaths to the dashboard. We'll continue to update our COVID nineteen da- dashboard daily, Monday through Friday, with the information that we have available to us. Um, so we're gonna take a look here at the CDC level of community transmission. This is the tool that we've been using, but in the next couple of slides, we'll go over another tool that the CDC has recently put out. Uh, but just an update, um, as of yesterday, we had a case rate of a hundred and forty-one point eight five for one hundred thousand. The prior week, we were at, um, I believe, five hundred and ninety-four, um, point two nine for one hundred thousand. So this is a decrease from where we've been. We have a test positivity rate currently of three point six nine percent. The prior week, we were at, um, roughly six point six percent. So it's also a decrease from where we've been. And for context, we want to see that test positivity rate below five percent for the past seven days. And then the case rate here, uh, we'd like to see that below ten new cases for one hundred thousand in the past seven days. Uh, but again, you know, looking at these, these numbers, it does not include those at-home test kits or other tests that are conducted but not reported. Um, so according to the CDC level of community transmission, we're still at that level of high community transmission. So I'll just do a, uh, brief overview here of this new tool that the CDC has put out. Um, it's the COVID nineteen community level. Um, so the CDC developed this new tool to really assess and measure the impact of COVID nineteen illness on health and healthcare systems to help provide, you know, information to the community regarding COVID nineteen community levels. And then the level of prevention measures that are recommended in relation to what that community level is. So, you know, throughout this pandemic, um, public health officials and scientists and states and so forth, you know, we've continued to really assess a variety of different data and information to really collectively identify what trends were being and infections and spread. And this is an additional tool that we can use in conjunction with our local data and indicators tracked. Um, so with this new tool that the CDC has put out, um, you know, it's, it's kind of going to be, um, a way to look at things differently than the tool we were looking at on the last slide. So the level of community transmission, which was that last slide that we were looking at, um, that looks at total new cases and it was that percent positivity. But, um, and this tool, you know, that tool was really helpful in informing recommendations and guidance, especially for those later prevention strategies and prior to vaccine treatment, um, availability and access. But, you know, fast forward to where we're at today and with the widespread availability of vaccines and treatment options, this new tool is kind of taking things, um, one step further and kind of shifting, um, shifting the focus to, um, reducing the impact of severe illness of COVID rather than eliminating COVID transmission. So, um, now, you know, in other words, the level of community transmission tool that the CDC has now had from that prior slide, that was really looking at, um, case incidence. So it was telling us, you know, primarily, um, what's the occurrence of new cases and the percent positivity during a specific period of time. You know, so it's telling us again about the incidence of cases in our communities, but it didn't really tell us anything about how severe or significant the illness was of those cases or what the strain may be on our healthcare system. Um, so for example, within the population of COVID, you know, we, if we saw, you know, X number of cases, how sick were people getting? And are we seeing a lot of new cases, um, with COVID nineteen that are also resulting in a lot of new hospital admissions? And then what would the impact like that look like on our healthcare system? So the new tool, I'll go over the chart on the next slide here. But the new tool factors in ways to really measure that, that the impact that the illnesses are having on health, so how sick are people getting? Um, and the impact that it then has on the healthcare system is a way to measure COVID nineteen community levels. Um, and, you know, kind of as I said, the CDC has noticed that this tool is shifting the focus from eliminating COVID nineteen transmission to really focusing on reducing the impact of severe illness. And, you know, the way that we continue to do that is through prevention of medically significant COVID illness. So, you know, um, vaccination primarily and staying up to date on those vaccinations, especially those booster doses, and then reducing the burden on our healthcare system and protecting those that are most vulnerable. Um, so here's a look at the chart from the CDC. This is what the new tool looks like. And this is a chart here from the CDC webpage. Um, and as I was saying, this tool will help us as a community decide what prevention steps we'll need to take based on the latest data, but also for our individual health behaviors. Um, so the levels here can be outlined, uh, of low, medium, and high. And they're determined by looking at the hospital beds being used for COVID nineteen, the hospital admissions for COVID nineteen, and the total of new COVID nineteen cases in an area. And then people can then take, make precautions or take precautions to protect themselves based on this information of COVID nineteen community levels in our area. So I'd like to walk through this together, um, about how to read this chart. Um, so first what we do is we determine, you know, we'll look at this first column here on the left. We'll first determine whether, um, our community has fewer than two hundred new cases for one hundred thousand in the past seven days or two hundred new cases or more for one hundred thousand people in the past seven days. So we start out here. Um, for Benton County, um, according to the CDC new metric, we have two hundred and forty-four point five six new cases for one hundred thousand people in the past seven days. Um, so then what we do is we're going to look at the next category. So now that we know we're here, we will look at the two indicators here and then over here for the parameters of where we fall on the scale, low, medium, or high. Um, so then we'll look over to that column. And for new COVID nineteen admissions for one hundred thousand population in seven days, we are at thirteen point eight. And for the percentage of staff and patient beds occupied by COVID nineteen patients, we're at ten point nine percent. Um, so, so kind of in summary, the way that we can look at this new tool is that the data here on this left-hand column, the data on new cases is kind of acting as an early warning indicator for what potential increases in the healthcare system strain we may see in a COVID nineteen surge. So we're gonna see, you know, how many cases do we have? But then taking it a step further, so not just looking at, you know, the, the, um, the two parameters of the old scale use, but taking it a step further and including those hospital admissions and hospitalizations or, um, staffed hospital beds, um, to kind of see what would that strain look like on a COVID nineteen surge. And that would be what the two, these two indicators look at here is the potential for impact on our health system. Um, so with all that being said, Benton County currently, it has a level of community transmission, or I'm sorry, COVID nineteen community level is high. And the CDC community levels can then inform our recommendations. And the current recommendations with a higher COVID nineteen community level from the CDC includes wearing a mask, staying up to date with your COVID vaccine, um, getting tested, you know, following those isolation quarantine guidance recommendations. And then really again, taking extra care if you're an individual or have a family member at home who's at a high risk of severe illness from COVID, taking extra steps to prevent COVID. Uh, and still vaccination, you know, is the leading public health prevention strategy to prevent severe disease from COVID. And, um, people who are up to date on vaccines have a much lower risk of severe illness than that from COVID compared to those who have not received their COVID vaccine. Um, last, um, all that new CDC tool, um, here's just a quick look at our COVID nineteen new case counts per week. Those white boxes indicating the current week in comparison to the year prior. And if you look over here again to the right of the screen, this is where we've been in recent weeks. So we're continuing to see a decline. And again, this only includes those, um, those test kits that we have reported. And then here's a look at our adult COVID nineteen case counts per week. Um, again, continuing to see a decline, decline if you look here to the right of the screen. Um, and then our county vaccination rates, we can, you know, again, vaccination continues for by protection. And we're currently here at the total population at fifty-three percent. For the age group eligible for vaccine, we're at fifty-seven percent. I think when I looked at the state level this morning, um, the total population for the state is at sixty-nine point seven percent. And then here are the, um, the current recommendations for prevention of COVID nineteen from the Minnesota Department of Health. While we're still seeing things head in the right direction, this is still, um, the current preventative steps that can be taken to prevent illness from the private. And then on the screen now, we're just some resources for the public. So if you're looking for a vaccine or if you're looking for a COVID nineteen test, um, there's some information there on how to find those. And in summary, we'll just continue to monitor the COVID situation again to just keep identifying trends, trends within our county and remain cautiously hopeful as we're seeing things continue to decline and we'll continue to monitor that ongoing. So what questions may you have for me?
Thank you, Jaclyn. Members, any questions? Commissioner Heinand?
Thank you, Jaclyn, for this information. Are we still setting up clinics yet for vaccinations? Vaccine shots?
Yes, so the clinics, the clinics that we've had recently have been wrapping up of our second doses, primarily in our five and, um, up age group, kind of the school-aged children age group. Um, but at this point in time, we're kind of taking a look at seeing if there's still a need for those vaccination clinics to go ongoing.
Thank you.
Anyone else, members? Any other questions?
Uh, I have a side, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I have a side note. Jaclyn, I couldn't get on the Shack meeting. Did you get online for that one?
I did, yes.
Oh, because I, I tried four times and I know there was five or six people that kept emailing saying they couldn't get on. So, thanks for, uh.
They, yeah, they, they noted in the, um, in the meeting that there was an issue, a technology issue with the link. And I think they had started to send out a different link or a new link.
Technology.
Somehow those that had, had a previous one were able to get on differently. But there was a, a lot of confusion on it. Yeah, they had noted several times, a lot of technical difficulties going on.
Thank you for that. I thought it was on my end, but apparently it wasn't, so that's good news.
No, it's personal.
Thank you, thank you again, Jaclyn. Uh, Bob, anything else for us?
Nope.
All right, well, during our Human Services Board and I'll pass it back to our chair.
Thank you. We'll re- reconvene our regular board meeting. Uh, next up, Commissioner Meeting Updates. Commissioner Schlangen.
Hey, I was on the Transportation Alliance meeting. And they are in need of, um, for staffing. They need someone to help with graphic design, event planner, um, grant writer. And their upcoming events, um, they're having a golf tournament on the, or I think Top Golf or something, March seventeenth. And transportation, um, Day at the Capitol is March thirty-first. Uh, their DC Fly-In's gonna be in, uh, September twentieth to the twenty-second. Um, the regional meetings are gonna be in September and October. And their annual, um, meeting will be in November. And we did our evaluation of our director and she had like a four-point-six rating. No, that was, that was TriCap. Sorry about that. I was at the TriCap meeting also. And. Let me see her. Um, they're working on, um, promotional materials. And so. Like doing a flyer, T-shirts, ins, word of mouth, et cetera. Worked on their bylaws and we evaluated our director and she got the four-point-six percent. Evaluation. Guess that's about it.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Unfortunately for me, I was gone on vacation a week, so I only had one meeting when I got back. Um, Commissioner Pop joined me on that yesterday, although he decided to join virtually and that was good to have you there.
Yeah.
We had our annual extension committee meeting at the Stearns County History Museum. Actually, I have to admit, was my first time there. It's quite a building.
Quite a building, yeah, yeah.
Certainly was. Um, basically just some of the highlights, as I think we brought up before, one of our educators, Katie Drewitz, will be leaving us actually March fifth. And of course, her husband Nate is also one of our educators and it's, we're quite certain he'll be leaving also. Sounds like he's here maybe through the end of June.
End of June, right.
Uh, so we're gonna be trying to fill, uh, two very important educator positions. Um, we also did, uh, have a consensus and kind of a vote to bring forth to all of our individual county boards in the future that we bring Sherburne County into our fold. So instead of a tri-county board, now it will be a quad county board. And for me, I'm kind of excited. I think it's gonna be a great move for us. And, and they had, uh, two commissioners there yesterday along with their county administrator. And, uh, they certainly seem to be excited to, uh, step into this project with us. So I think they heard very clearly that our, our current, uh, board works very well together and we want to keep it that way. And so I, I think they completely understand that. So it's gonna be nice to have them.
Right.
Along with us.
And the, the other part is that we'll have to, um, increase, they, they also voted to increase from ninety-five, uh, point nine five a position to one oh, and that's what'll be coming before the board.
And, yeah, and the way that was explained, the way I understood it, so that's roughly forty-five hundred dollars. And so what will be presented to each county board is that, for instance, Benton County's portion is like a point six, point six or six-five.
Yeah.
And we would then potentially pay point six of the forty-five hundred.
And there shouldn't be any costs this year and possibly next year because we're already gonna be into May, June, July before, you know, some of these start. Um, on a side note is that, you know, I've been pushing for, this, the, the tri-county's been the only, um, one in the state of Minnesota on the extension. I've been pushing for. I've been pushing for four or five years that others do it and now...
Me and the Cloud and Wright.
And Wright County are going to join it too. And I think you're going to see more and more. We get more bang for your buck. There's no way around it. So, we'll bring on one more full-time person. So, we'll have four full-time people instead of three. And I think they're going to cover all the bases, small, small farms and...
Yeah, potential irrigation also.
And irrigation and, what is it, like farmers markets and stuff like that will be included in that. Because I thought the one guy brought out a good point that almost every town now, whether you're small or medium-sized or large, has a farmer's market. And people are into that. They're, you know, and so they want to help these people get their stuff to market.
Right. That was a good meeting. That's all I had.
Well, keep going, Commissioner Pop.
Okay. Well, all I had, the other one I had is I had library and we just, it was a work session. We just worked on plans for this year and what they see going forward. Talked about Legislative Library Legislative Day and stuff like that. They continue, which I like it, they continue to find local resources for their funding instead of going all over the country for banks. They're going to try to stick this more local. I think so far I've signed four or five different banks to invest our money in, which never made sense to me why we just used the magic fund and dispersed it from California to Connecticut, you know.
Do either of the banks in Foley happen to be Falcon?
Yep. Falcon was one of the first and I think France and this may be coming on board now.
Okay.
So, that, then on the 23rd, I went to the Soil and Water meeting. And fairly long, if anybody's going to go, it's going to take up a good part of your morning. I think they start at eight and we were, I left at 11:30 and they still weren't quite done. A lot of projects could have changed some of their ways they're doing things. But, you know, you got to remember, we do have a big stake in this game and they contribute a lot to the economy in this county for that. You know, they did get what, the $470,000 some thousand dollars, which they figure will accumulate out to about $4 million in projects when they're all done between ownership and all the other things that go on. So, it was really good. They'll meet again on the 23rd of, of March. And so, if anybody wants to go, you know.
If I could tag onto that, I think maybe at our next meeting on the 15th, you know, start thinking ahead of who's going to be able to go. So, there's that we always have that out in front of us.
It's always the fourth. I believe it's the fourth Wednesday at 8 o'clock in the morning. I think when they get to summer, they might move it to nine. I'm not for sure on that one. But, you know, they got a great board. Then also on the 24th, we had the Rum River One Water One Plan. And we sent it to Bowser, believe it or not. Finally, I mean, after, they said after almost three years, this plan finally got to Bowser. And I think Wade Bastine is on there from Soil and Water. And there's some things that they did and things in the timeline that they're going to use on the Mississippi-St. Cloud one. Because this doesn't have to drag on like this forever. And it ended up that we had three options. And one option, which was not, not in favor of anybody, was the Policy Committee stays in place and you meet monthly to approve projects. And that just didn't, there's nobody wanted to do that from, you know. And then, so we went to the part where we're going to have an executive committee and they're going to approve poli, or projects. And the Policy Committee is going to meet no less than two times a year and possibly four times a year. So, this is going to be an ongoing deal. You're never really going to get out of the One Water One Plan anymore. I thought when it was done, it was done. And that's not going to be the case just because you, you know, if you choose the entity or the, what is it? It's either the entity or something else we've chose. We chose the entity and that's how it's going to have to work. And the other part is that they get $1 million over two years to do projects. And there's, you know, I don't know, 19% for administrative costs. When you get all said and done, you won't have $400,000 for projects. And the rest is going to have to come from people like Jerry Machie and them getting grants or something like that. So, it's not a lot of money that, that Bowser's, you know, going to put towards these projects anymore. And, you know, I think as a former commissioner, one that was here once said, "In this whole scheme of things, it looks like Bowser wants to be as big as the DNR." And that's all it really is about. Bowser wants to grow itself.
It's another bureaucratic layer of this.
Yep, another bureaucratic where we were getting along just fine with the previous plan. But as, you know, as a county and as commissioners and Soil and Water people, you have to go and try and find the things to get projects done for clean water and that. So, that was it. And the other part is, you know, now we have a little bit of lag because the tribe came into this real late in the game. And so, Commissioner Phobey from Stearns County is going to try and bring them up to speed on some of this. They did not, I don't believe they voted in whether to send the plan to Bowser or not. But the plan is at Bowser. So, now we got another, we're not meeting until April when Bowser's done with the plan and bring it back and see if they accept the plan and, you know.
Is Commissioner Reynolds involved in this too?
Yes.
Being it's with the...
Yep, she's involved. We did have a long discussion on some of the language and a couple of the deals because it was extreme weather conditions. And a couple of the Mille Lacs County Commissioners didn't like the word "extreme" weather conditions in there. So, we had to change the wording in some of this to, you know, it went on for, I think we started at 5 o'clock and I think we were done at quarter to 8. So, it went on for quite a while. And then, of course, we had the tri-county extension, which was really good yesterday.
I'll just add one final thing to that. I find out that senior commissioners can pretty much tell us junior commissioners who's going to be sitting on the interview committee for new educators coming up. You know, so now it's right at the meeting. Well, Commissioner Pop said Commissioner Johnson's going to be sitting on.
How'd that go over?
Well, I said, "I'll have a discussion with Commissioner Pop." And guess what? I'm going to be on the interview committee.
That's experience speaking right there.
He isn't telling you the whole story because I did, I was on the interview committee for all three of the people that are currently here and I think it's time to have some change.
It is. Change is good.
Change is good and have a different view on who we hire.
I just want to razz you a little bit.
Granted, these three are really good that we've hired. You know, I won't, I won't say that. So, I think...
Two of them are going to be gone.
And two of them are going to be gone, you know. And one of the things that we did when we hired Katie was, well, we hired Nathan first. We hired Nathan to replace Dan John, or not, what was his name downstairs?
Martin.
Martin, Dan Martins. And so, when we interviewed for the horticulture one, this Katie applied and her name wasn't Drewitz. They weren't married at the time. And after we come to the conclusion, they tell us, "Well, you know, she's only applying because she's married to Nathan, going to be marrying Nathan." And then, then they go and buy a house in Cold Spring and we're thinking like, "We're set for life." Well, here came a position for her to go to her home counties of Fillmore and Houston Counties. And she's going to, you know, be the agent. So, you can't blame her for that. I mean...
But that takes him with.
And then, yeah. And so, now that takes him with. He doesn't have a job, you know. But I, the way it sounds, the university's working on a position for him down there. But wish him great luck.
Commissioner Johnson, I'm glad you went with the seniors instead of the old boys.
I respect my elders and my seniors. Thank you, Commissioner Pop.
Are you finished?
Commissioner, that was very long-winded.
I figured I'd let you keep going or else you're going to appoint me on something. All right. Obviously, we, we went through the Assessor interviews and everything like that. Them one very good. I think we went through three of them. Yep. So, we seen Brian was the recommended and approved today. Went to the BEP, Benton Economic Partnership Board meeting. Those are always great to attend.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. I, I kind of voiced...
You were appointed to that?
No, well, no, I'm an alternate.
He's an alternate.
He's an alternate under Commissioner Pop.
Yeah, under Commissioner Pop. Yeah, exactly. He did, he did direct me to go to this one. So, but I did voice my opinion on that. We did, end of last year, we did a presentation from Crow Wing County on their economic partnership. And one of the things that came out of that was a, they, they actually got a recruiter that is a part of their economic partnership. And that just has stuck with me from, from here on out with, especially with trying to get people and applicants and qualified people to apply, whether that's county, whether that's in your local businesses or whatever. So, I, I kind of pushed them to see how we could figure out how to do something like that here. I think it would cash flow itself because they actually charge their businesses a amount to do that. And if you're a part of the economic partnership, based on the level, it goes down per hire, like any recruiter would do.
Sure.
So, I, I think within six months, it could cash flow itself, to be quite honest with you. We had a broadband, we've had a couple broadband meetings. We had one the other day. Matter of fact, we got a little consensus deal today. We're going to be coming back. Findlay Engineering is working on the broadband RFI for providers. And they'll have that back to us next Thursday, next Wednesday?
14th, I think.
14th? Yep. And what this RFI does is it gives, it gives the providers basically what we're looking for. And they come back to us with a plan and everything like that. We're not, we're not engaging contracts or anything like that. But what, what we kind of want to do is, is have a consensus that if that looked good, we could circulate it to everybody. But if that looked good, give them the ability to actually go ahead and put it out on the street.
Commissioner Bensky, you thinking that will be, are we going to be able to get that on our March 15th board meeting?
The goal would, I think, be actually, put it out in the public to start the time before that meeting.
Oh, okay.
And if you would like the opportunity to formally approve it, that's of course fine, yeah. But obviously up to you.
Yep.
Okay.
And I, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to beat the border-to-border grants when they're due. And we're, we're cutting it so close on timing. So, the quicker we can get it advertised out there, we can still circulate it to the whole board and everything like that. But there are no contracts. There's no nothing.
It doesn't, it's not making any commitments.
Nope.
It's just an RFI, yeah.
It's an RFI, yeah. So, are you, would we have a consensus that we can go ahead at least put it out in the public and advertise it?
I think we absolutely get it going.
Okay.
Let's, we got to keep moving forward. We got to be ahead of the game.
Absolutely.
And, and the Broadband Subcommittee will be reviewing the RFI, being prepared by...
Next week.
Right. So, it'll have some eyes on it before it comes out.
Yep. And if you can be a part of that, that would be great. Okay. That's all I got on that one. We had a Emergency Medical Services Board Emergency Meeting. So, basically what's, what's happening there is the Emergency Services Board, there's, it's been funded by seatbelts and everything like that. And as we know, seatbelts have been going away. They're looking for funding. So, they're, basically this board's getting in front of the, the train when it comes to this opioid settlement and money to try and keep this board going. I made the comment that I hate the fact that we have to look for outside resources like this, you know, this opioid settlement. If this wasn't there, how would we take care of it? And I made the comment that if, if we, if we go ahead and start using these resources to fund a board, we're taking the state of Minnesota off the hook for something that's very well needed. With that said, it still needs to be, it still needs to be funded. There's a lot of good things that, that go into this board. One of the things that, another thing I brought up is something I've been saying the whole time is, Minnesota is the, matter of fact, last night I had a two-hour meeting on the, I'm on the State Legislative Committee for Fire Departments. And we had a legislative meeting with Republican Rasmussen on, they're trying to take over some of our pension funds to put it in the SBI and kind of mandate all that. It's very early in, but there's a lot of opposition to that. And I made the comment last night, I said, you know, it, the state is trying to, and they're calling it retention and attraction. And I'm like, so this, so the state is trying to dictate our own money that we already get without looking at the real problem that we are the third-most volunteers of, we're, Minnesota's a third-rated in volunteers for fire departments. So, and then we're the 48th least funded. So, those are...
And they want to step in and fix this problem.
Yeah, with our own money already.
Yeah, great, yeah.
So, that was, that was a long meeting. But basically, the Emergency Services Board, I actually got put on the, the committee to come up with a plan to bring back to our county board to try and get support of some of this opioid money going to, to do this.
Commissioner Bensky, and why you brought up the opioid settlement and Monty, maybe you could help clarify this. If I recall correctly from the AMC meeting, those dollars are not all one-time dollars.
No.
That's over like 18 years.
Yeah, correct. The vast majority is over five, the first five. It's, it's front-loaded.
Front-loaded, okay.
It's front-loaded, yep.
Jared, what, you know, I went to these on a, on a rare occasion. So, what is their balance of their reserves? I mean, every time I went there, it was like chop, chop.
Oh, it's horrible.
I mean, at one point, when I got on there and I went for, I think with then Commissioner McMahon, they were like at a million three.
Yep.
And do they have a half a million left?
It's in the 100, 120.
Yeah. I mean, so, I mean, and you can see why.
The, the moral of the story is if we don't fund this board, the county's got to take it on ourselves.
Yeah.
And we'll be paying a position.
Yeah.
So, that's why, I mean, if you look at it, we don't have a lot of ambulance services and stuff like that in our county. But this is bigger than just our county. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ambulance services just outside of our county that, that are really affected by all this. So...
It's a huge amount of counties in this, ain't there?
Uh, I think 13 or something like that.
Yeah. Most of them are all from the north, too.
Yep.
You know, so it really affects them a lot. Because I've been on that board for two years, too. And it just dwindled down to nothing.
Yeah.
Just nothing for the reserve.
And they do do good things for the medical services and, and stuff like that. So, I'll be bringing that back. I just wanted to put it on everybody's plate. Other than that, that's, that's all I got.
Wow. I'm not going to be as winded as the last two commissioners. Thanks for the updates. So, I, I had a Benton County Historical Society meeting. They're hoping to be done with Phase 1 and Phase 2 by the end of April. And intentions are to move in in May or June. So, they're going to be putting up their building for sale, you know, hopefully by May. And they've already got five people that contacted them already.
About buying it?
About buying it before it even hit the market. So... And then, of course, we were at the, some of us were at the Benton County Association Township Officers Meeting. I want to thank Sheriff Troy Heck, Roxanne, let's see, who else? And Chris.
Chris was there.
You know, from the Highway and Amanda from BEP because it made my speech very short because they touched up on everything. So, that was really nice. I had a CJ, CJI meeting. Jodeen from the Place of Hope gave an introduction and talked about her place. Then Victoria Blonigan was with us. She talked about the Warming Shelter. She's there on Tuesdays and Thursdays afternoons. And she talked about Lincoln Center a little bit. She's on the CAT team and she also goes into jail and goes around to the tent cities, too. And then, of course, as you found out, I could not attend the Shack meeting because I could not get online. Tried four times and that was enough. And then I had the Benton County Law Library, which we meet once a year. And it was very entertaining this year. I can almost, I can tell you that, right, Mr. Miller? It was actually a very fun meeting. Tim actually wanted to thank Monty and Jackie for all the information that they're giving, Tim, for the Law Library. And Monty, just so you know, we've got bought like a $25,000 fund balance, which is really nice.
The fees were increased, so the balance has improved.
Yep. So, our fees, our, our fees were at 12 and went to 15. And then that's what the judges put on it for citations and all of that. And we've always had a problem with the other side of the river foregoing all those fees. But Benton County is making sure that these fees are, are adjusted. So, that's good. That's all I had. So, Commissioner Concerns. Anything under Commissioner Concerns?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pop?
As we moved forward with the Phase 2 of the study, I was just wondering if there's, if we need to contact the present owner to see if he's, if he's okay with this or, I mean, if...
A long time ago, I asked him if we had his permission to let Broner Tech go on the site to do soil samples and drilling and he said yes. I have that in an email.
Okay. Because maybe it's a little more than what he's aware of, you know, the vapor studies and all that. And we don't want to get into anything where you did it and I didn't tell you to do it and...
And he was aware a long time ago, we have these concerns and this is going to happen. You bet.
Okay.
I, I think you might want to just forward an email to him or something, Monty, and let him know what we're doing.
I, I actually, I sent an update a couple of days ago.
Okay.
And so, I just actually US-mailed him the draft purchase agreement. It's going to go out today. So...
Okay. I just don't want... Okay, I just don't want any surprises that we do it and he says, okay, you guys found it, you cleaned it.
Is I'll shoot him another email today, seeing the board approve the phase two, so he knows for sure it's, you know, it could happen, you know? Yep, I want him an additional email, yeah.
Okay, anything else on that one? Many of the whole meetings?
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, the AMC Leadership Summit is coming up, March thirty through April first. Grandview Lodge in this, well, uh, so I was wondering if we could get a show of hands of who is interested in attending. So Beth, you taking note?
I will be attending.
Trinhin?
It's a great conference, actually, you know, if you have the ability and the time to make it.
Any, anyone else at this point? Commissioner Pop?
I, I will be on vacation.
Sure, so Beth will be in touch with you, Commissioner Schlangen? Beth will be in touch with you individually about your lodging wishes and so on.
Beth, Beth I'll go, too.
Commissioner Johnson?
I, I can tell you, so, so I went to a couple of them. First one, I went myself, and the second one, I can honestly tell you, some of the senior commissioners actually went there, too, and was very, very surprised of the information and how it all went.
Okay, so again, that's March thirty through April first, Grandview Lodge. And um, again, we'll be in touch about your lodging wishes. And I probably should maybe print off a draft agenda, too, and put those in, in mailboxes, so.
Yeah, it was on the AMC website.
Okay.
Yep, um, you know, and they've had really good speakers in the past.
I've often heard rave reviews of, of these sessions, yeah.
I think it's a good point, too, and Beth and I have talked about this, but to remind us of a cancellation dates for lodging, so that we make sure we're aware of that if we need to change plans, uh, so that.
Beth, if you could please, yeah, I understand, something may come up, and, yep, of course. Uh, lastly is um, Roxanne and I would like to discuss with you, um, she was approached by the, uh, the Homeowners Association of Eagleview Commons, and apparently they need to replace the community septic system. And they'd like some county facilitation uh, with them to help finance this. And it's, it's kind of a long story, but it sounds like is, is um, there's a loan program through MPCA that the county could, could apply for, and then help finance the septic replacement. And then, and then the, we would recover those resources from the homeowners through a special assessment. So that, that's kind of a very quick uh summary of it. Uh, Roxanne, we've had a couple, a conversation with folks from MPCA. We also talked recently with folks from, I believe it's Otter Tail County that has done this a lot. So we, uh, we'd like to discuss with this, this concept with you. We'll get you some more information in a packet beforehand, but it sounds like this system, it's now about twenty years old, and apparently it needs to be replaced.
Where is this addition?
The Eagleview Commons down by Dwel.
Well, in south of Dwel.
Yeah.
Or southwest of Dwel.
There's about forty uh homes in that, in that subdivision, and uh, it's served by one uh fairly large community septic system.
So would, would that open us up to the Lake Andrew addition, too, with their septic, too? That they're going through with WATAB right now?
Play fun on that one.
Yeah, fortunately, it's much newer, so hopefully it's not facing replacement at this point.
You mean the Lake Andrew one?
Yeah.
Oh, the Lake Andrew one's got a lot of problems.
Yeah, so that.
Okay.
So, so that was my question, you know?
And topic number two is, is talk about redistricting, maybe give you some maps and talk about some ideas and options. If I recall correctly, if the board is going to um, do any redistricting, you, you would need to uh, have a form, a formal public hearing and adoption by your first meeting in May.
Right.
In May, so uh, looking at some possible dates for, uh, again, talk about redistricting in Eagleview Commons. Uh, I do need a bit of time to work with Scott to make sure we're prepared and to be prepared on Eagleview Commons. I'd just like to get a date on your calendars. Um, I was gonna suggest the twenty-first to twenty-second. Looks like we have, and we're not gonna have a broadband committee meeting any, any longer, so how about the twenty-first to twenty-second of March?
The, the Tuesdays always work better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's usually board meetings every other Tuesday, so in general, Tuesdays.
So Tuesday the twenty-second, the call's in?
Twenty-second at nine, okay, great. So redistricting and then Eagleview Commons uh, community septic system. Working okay for you, Roxanne, lot not up ahead? Yes, great, thanks.
And I'm sorry, you said nine.
Excuse me?
Nine o'clock.
Yes. Okay, that's all we had, if you'd like to do a motion to set those.
So move, Mr. Chair, second.
Okay, got a motion as second to set the call. Any other discussions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're, oops, sorry, we got one more issue coming in front of us. Monty Hedley, county minister, on behalf of the county board, review and discuss public documents related to the Benton County Attorney's uh treasurer's residency. I just want to inform all commissioners here, please stick to the facts, stick to our eighty-four pages, and let's get through this.
So, Mr. Chair, uh, it's my understanding that, that there's a wish for me to uh essentially read some of the materials that are in this packet, uh, then of course, which I will do, and commit those to the record. I should just wanted to know, you see a table of contents
Yep.
Here in this packet, you see documents one through thirteen. The vast majority of these documents were public records that we obtained uh through our county attorney's office, which they in turn obtained from Sherburne County. So I just wanted to stress these are public records. Uh, the exceptions to that are documents six, eight, ten, twelve, and thirteen. Those were public documents that, that were obtained through a data practice or request from county records. So for example, the personnel records, those are records we maintain, that was from a data practices request. That's document number eight. Uh, so I just wanted to, to stress what was, we obtained from Sherburne County versus what was obtained internally. But again, these are all public records. So uh, I believe the desire was for me to, to read uh for you a couple of pages, and this is from page number six and seven. It's handwritten, page number six and seven. So this is the investigative report from Sergeant Luke McLean. He's a investigator for Sherburne County Sheriff's Office. And uh, I believe this report was dated, uh, let's see here. In June of two thousand and twenty. Yeah, it was dated, the report, uh, it's on page five, it was dated June twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Obviously, as the investigation was conducted just prior to that. So without delay, then I'll go ahead, and again, I'm starting on page six. And we'll go to page seven, and I believe there's two other pages that we'll, we'll also cover. I'm gonna have to get my glass of water, because I know I'm gonna get dry drunk.
Yeah, commissioners that are winded, please drink water, too.
All right, on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, I being Sergeant Luke McLean, I was assigned an alleged perjury case involving an elected official. According to emails that were forwarded to me, Benton County has requested the Sherburne County Sheriff's Office to investigate a possible incident involving their auditor treasurer. According to the emails from Benton County Attorney Philip Miller and Nadine Inman, the auditor treasurer was possibly residing outside of Benton County despite an elected official with Benton County. On April twentieth, two thousand and twenty, a concerned citizen emailed the St. Cloud Times as well as Philip Miller, stating they believe that Nadine Inman has been and continues to reside outside of the county. I viewed the email string that was sent from Benton County, and it appears that on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, Miller had already forwarded the allegation to Nadine Inman via email. Miller had already told Inman that the allegation was going to be investigated further. I queried Nadine Inman in the Minnesota DVS website, and Inman was reporting an address of five-one-seven-nine-eighty-fifth Street, northeast Stock Rapids, Minnesota. I verified that this address does indeed exist in Benton County. When querying the vehicles registered to Nadine Inman, I noticed all her vehicles were registered to the address of nine-seven-four-five-one-hundred-and-sixty-sixth Court, southeast Becker, Minnesota, five-five-three-zero-eight. These veh- vehicles included a two thousand and nineteen Jeep Grand Cherokee that was titled to Terrence and Nadine Inman. On eleven-twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, I queried the address of nine-seven-four-five-one-hundred-and-sixty-sixth Court, south, southeast Becker, Minnesota, within the Beacon Property ID website, that's a property tax system, and identified the owners as Terrence J. Inman and Nadine M. Inman. I requested copies of the property tax statements from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty belonging to the, this address, and all the documents identified the same taxpayers as Terrence and Nadine Inman. I queried Nadine Inman within the Accurate, Accurate Public Information System, and there was no known associations of Nadine Inman to the address of five-one-seven-nine-eighty-fifth Street, northeast Stock Rapids, Minnesota. I was forwarded a letter sent from Jolene Ellenbecker dated May first, two thousand and twenty. In the letter, Ellenbecker identifies herself as the owner of five-one-seven-nine-eighty-fifth Street, northeast, and she identifies Nadine Inman as a tenant at her address. Ellenbecker advised that due to COVID-nineteen concerns, she was discontinuing the room rental to Nadine. In the letter, it mentions that Nadine has been temporarily not living at the Stock Rapids address since March of two thousand and twenty due to COVID-nineteen concerns. On May fifth, two thousand and twenty, I, again Sergeant McLean, knocked on the front door of five-one-seven-nine-eighty-fifth Street, northeast, and made contact with Jolene Ellenbecker, uh, five nineteen, I believe that's her birth date. Ellenbecker advised that she worked for Nadine Inman at Benton County, but had, was currently on leave due to COVID-nineteen concerns. When asked if Inman lived at the address, Ellenbecker replied, "I couldn't tell you, I mean, I don't keep track. We go on vacations," in quotation marks. Ellenbecker advised that Nadine, Nadine Inman paid her one hundred dollars per month for rent. Ellenbecker said Inman didn't have family come to the house and said that Inman had some property at the house when she would stay there. When pressed how often Inman would stay at the residence, Ellenbecker would not commit to Inman staying at her residence full-time. When specifically asked if Inman was using her residence to keep her employment in Benton County, Ellenbecker responded, "That's what I would imagine, would you want to?" question mark. When asked a second time if Inman was just keeping the address to keep her job, she responded in quotations, "Well, that's part of the requirement, yeah," end of quotation marks. When asked if she believed Inman used her address as a permanent address, she responded, "She basically lives in several places," quote, end of quotes. When asked if Jolene's husband, who also resided in the home, would have any information about Inman living there, she responded, "He works in the cities, so he wasn't around much," end of quotation marks. I emailed Inman and asked if she was willing to give me a statement about the residence requirement issue. Inman initially, Inman initially agreed, but after a couple of days, she changed her mind and declined to meet with me to give me a statement about the residency issue. I contacted the Minnesota Secretary of State phone number and was sent a copy of the affidavit of candidacy that was completed by Nadine Inman. According to Benton County officials, Inman was initially named the county auditor in two thousand and seventeen by appointment. As such, she did not need to run for office and wasn't required to move into Benton County at that time. On uh, May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, Inman filed for candidacy to run for the auditor treasurer position for the November of two thousand and eighteen election. Per Minnesota State statute, Inman would be required to move into the jurisdiction in what she was filing at least thirty days prior to the actual election. When Inman completed her affidavit of candidacy, she swore or affirmed she would be residing in the jurisdiction of her office. According to Minnesota State statute definitions of determination of residence, Minnesota statutes two hundred dot oh-three-one, I don't believe Inman could use the Benton County address to fulfill her residency requirements. On July seventh, two thousand and twenty, I requested a historical search warrant of cell phone usage and the physical whereabouts to assist in determining if Inman was residing the majority of her time within Benton County rather than her listed address in Sherburne County. The, this information could assist in determining whether or not Inman committed perjury under Minnesota State statute. I requested the timeframe to be from October first, two thousand and eighteen, through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. This time period covered the dates in which Inman will be required to be residing in Benton County. I was provided Inman's personal phone number, although it's redacted, from Benton County officials, as well as Inman listed the phone number on her affidavit of candidacy. A search through Accurate also identified this phone number to belong to Nadine, Nadine Inman from Verizon Wireless. On July seventh, two thousand and twenty, the Honorable Karen Shomer, who's a district judge in Sherburne County, signed the search warrant. On July eighth, two thousand and twenty, I faxed a copy of the search warrant to Verizon Wireless. Further investigation will be conducted, and the results are returned from Verizon Wireless. End of report, Sergeant Luke McLean. And now we're gonna go to page twenty-three, and this is, uh, I believe this is more post-investigation. This report is dated August sixth, two thousand and twenty. All right, let's begin a narrative. On uh, July eighth, two thousand and twenty, a copy of the signed search warrant for the cell data belonging to phone number, again, it's redacted, was faxed to Verizon Wireless. On July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, the Sherburne County Sheriff's Office received the search warrant via an email attachment. The records returned from Verizon Wireless were encrypted. Upon opening the records, they were immediately placed into a folder, and the records were given to criminal intelligence analyst William Jones to put into the CellHawk program. On August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, I received a PowerPoint completed by William Jones associated with the call data records and cell phone tower locations. According to the cell phone data, the only dates that Verizon had within their scope was July tenth, two thousand and nineteen, through, that's April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Jones completed his PowerPoint analyzing each cell phone call data usage event from phone number, it's redacted, on a week-to-week basis. The usage is significant at Nadine Inman's residence at nine-seven-four-five-one-hundred-and-sixty-sixth Court, southeast Becker, Minnesota, as well as significant usage at her place of employment in the city of Foley. Please see the PowerPoint for exact times in which phone number, redacted, was used during the above mentioned timeframe. It should be of note that according to the cell, to the cell tower records during that timeframe, there was little to no cell phone usage at the address of five-one-seven-nine-eighty-fifth Street, southeast Stock Rapids, Minnesota, five-six-three-seven-nine. This was the alleged address that Nadine Inman, Nadine Inman was using for her employment while being the county auditor treasurer for Benton County. The complete usage list was broken down on the cell records, and as previously mentioned, usage was extremely limited in the Stock Rapids area. The vast majority of the phone calls made occurred at the residence in Becker, within the cell tower range of the residence in Becker and the city of Foley where Nadine Inman worked. A copy of the PowerPoint presentation will be placed into the evidence room at the Sherburne County Sheriff's Office, and a copy of the report will be forwarded to the Sherburne County Attorney's Office as part of this review. By going through the cell tower records and usage, it appears that Nadine Inman was not residing in the Benton County, excuse me, the Stock Rapids residence, according to the data provided by Verizon Wireless. According to Minnesota State statute two hundred dot oh-three-one, under determination of residence, I do not believe that Nadine Inman follows any of the criteria of residing in Benton County when Nadine Inman completed her affidavit of candidacy. On May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, Nadine Inman swore that she would be maintaining residence within Benton County at least thirty days before the general election. I could find no records indicating that Nadine, Nadine Inman actually moved to the address in Stock Rapids that would meet this, those definitions. In Minnesota State statute six oh-nine dot four-eight dot one, paragraph one, it states, "Whoever makes false material statement, not believing it to be true, or in any of the following cases, guilty of perjury." The affidavit of candidacy will be attached to this file for reference. Due to these circumstances, I will forward this case to the Sherburne County Attorney's Office for possible per, charge of perjury against Nadine Inman. End of report. So that concludes the, the pages I was asked to read. Uh, at this point, Mr. Chair, I, I turn it over to you all, and I believe you all wish to review any of these documents, please do.
As we move forward, Board, uh, we have a lot of questions, please direct all questions to Monty for clarification or understanding and/or just that. Just to let everybody know, in the audience, we are not opening it for discussion for audience members. And St. Cloud Times is in the audience, and so is Jacob. Uh, I thank you for writing these articles. Normally, you probably wouldn't hear that from an elected official, but I'm glad you stuck to the truth in these eighty-four pages. I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, moving forward, who, who would like to start?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I just, I, to start, I wanna go through some key timelines of this. Uh, this, this may seem kinda outside the bounds, but I, I'll, I'll come back to a lot of it at the end. Basically, a point, Nadine was appointed. Basically, Nadine was appointed in 2017, filed for office in May of 2018, file closing somewhere in the June timeframe into May. She, let's see, October 2018, she was supposed to establish residency 30 days prior to the election. Election happened, took office 2019. Anonymous letter came in, April 28, 2020. Investigation sent to Sherburne County, April 29, 2020. May 1st, 2020, lease termination from Ms. Ellenbecker to Ms. Inman. May 4th, 2020, Sergeant McLean's interview with Ms. Ellenbecker. May 5th through the 7th, McLean's multiple emails to Ms. Inman, ultimately declining an interview referencing her decision not because of COVID. May 20th through June 20, filing started and finished for current county board members, which are three of us right now. October 6, 2020, Samuel Withermere, I'll probably...
Retirement.
Retirement, okay, thank you. Sherburne County, letter to Sergeant McLean and CC Benton County. November 20, 2020, election, three new board members. July 2021, board was addressed by Assistant County Attorney Michelle Myers on this issue. July 20, July 2021 to present, heavy push from public to keep looking into this issue. December 10, 2021, Mr. Miller's memo to the county board and sent to at least one person in the public. And to this date, still, all personal data on record goes to Ms. Inman's Becker address. The reason I went through this timeline like this, I don't have a clue how we got here. This should have been handled before the, as these dates, before the county board, before we even got, even thought about putting our names in. I mean, this was started back in 2020. She took office in 2018, or 2019 she took office. But this investigation started basically on the 28th of April, a month, almost two months before we even put in for candidacy. There was a letter dated October 6, copied to Benton County officials before the election even happened. And to my recollection right now and to the knowledge that I've been told by current board members and past board members, the previous board didn't even know about the investigation, didn't know about the outcome, none of the documents included. I don't have a clue how we're here. I mean, this is substantial information that a county board didn't know about but are in charge of all of these budgets and people. So, I got some other stuff, but I want to hear, I'm going to go through Ms. Ellenbecker's interview and pull out some stuff, but maybe I'll take a break here and let others talk.
So, this information that was brought forth to us, it would have been nice to have it in October of 2020 when the information, when all this information was available. Maybe that's on us not asking for it. I don't know. You know? But here we are, sitting in March, dealing with this twice for me, three times for Commissioner Pop, and this has always come up. One thing that I would like to disclose, if her residency is supposed to be in Benton County, if you go to page 66, oops, let's go back to 60, page 64, 65, 66, and 67, and these are all requests for salary increases, and it's her Becker address. And even when she filled it out for our financial supervisor for an employee, it's still her Becker address. You know, I'm trying to have a hard time understanding that if she's supposed to be a resident in Benton County, is that acceptable?
Mr. Chair, I think one of my frustrations as a new board member is I can recall specifically when we had a member here from the public that addressed this board and basically put Commissioner Pop on the spot as the board chair, questioning this. Commissioner Pop then gave us all the information that, yes, I checked the driver's license, yes, I did this, and yes, I did that. It's a non-issue based on the information that he knew. He didn't have this information from October of '20.
Right.
Or he probably would have shared it at that time, right? So now, as a new board member, I'm like, he's checked it out, we're good to go. It was off my radar.
So, after he checked it out, I actually visited Nadine too about this, and she gave me the same information that she gave you, Commissioner Pop.
Well, obviously, the frustration is there was obvious information there, 84 pages of it, which go way beyond what you were asked about.
Right, yeah. None of this, when I was asked about it, none of this was available or even towards me. On this whole situation, I find it a little bit appalling that the rules were out there for you to read, to understand, and to abide by. And somewhere in here, we didn't think we had to do it. It's frustration on my part, I mean, I think the work in that office is very good, but there's just, I didn't, truthfully, I didn't know that there was all these rules that you had to follow, you know, and I, what, Commissioner Kapinski, you know, the titles of the vehicles, things like that that you need to change. And then, when you get back to the employee part, that's even worse than anything for me. So, I don't know. I'm just kind of like in awe, like, holy cow, you know, and I, if it is, maybe, I don't know, was it a responsibility of the board to check this out? I don't know.
I think it's the lack of information the board did not receive. Is it, you know, and Monty, the question is, is it's the board responsibility to keep asking, asking, asking? Or is it county employees or elected officials that are supposed to give us information or try to provide us with information?
Tough question. You know, I think maybe that's something you might look inside yourselves and say, you know, we as a county board, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our residents to investigate issues that concern us. I imagine for many of you, the answer to that question is yes. I think as Scott Anderson has advised, you can initiate action just like any citizen could in court to challenge residency. So, you could. I don't know if you'll find anywhere in statute that says you must, you shall, you know, that you have this. I think you can. I think that's a choice that you make. The second part of your question was, does the elected official or anyone else have responsibility to divulge relevant information to you? I mean, asking me as a person, I would say, of course, yes. I mean, I think that's the right thing to do, is to divulge information. Do they have a legal obligation? That's a matter for a lawyer to answer. But just as a person, I would say, of course, they do.
Just for clarification, for the record, can you tell everybody who Mr. Anderson is?
Mr. Anderson is an attorney with Rupp, Anderson, Squires, and Walzberger, and Mace in Minneapolis. His name is, again, Scott Anderson. He's an experienced attorney in Minnesota municipal law.
And the board hired him.
That's right. We've retained his services.
Retained his services, sorry. Thank you for that clarification.
I would agree with Monty, as it, for me, it comes down to a matter of principle on it. I mean, it's really kind of that simple.
Mr. Chair? I would, some of this interview questions, I want to read into the record because as I looked at it for the first time back in, man, I think it was just beginning of January, I couldn't believe what I was reading and how it didn't resonate with anybody else that this was a problem to bring it to our board. So, page 15, and I'll read McLean and Ellenbecker, I'll just say their last names. So, McLean, "But I have a hard time believing, you know, she obviously lives in Becker, right? In the township? She actually doesn't live very far from me. I know that for a fact, yeah. So, you know, and I know the vehicle she drove and stuff, and no, no, and then, I, I don't know, I don't get some of this wording, but I would see it because I happen to drive by that area quite often, unfortunately." Ellenbecker, "Okay, so that's why..." And then, McLean, "So, that's why I know she didn't live here very often." Ellenbecker, "Yeah." I'm like, that was alarming. So then, you go down to the next set of questioning. McLean, "So, that's why I'm trying to figure out if it was more of she did it just because she didn't want to lose her job and she didn't want to get away from her family and she just wanted, you know, to keep her employment." Ellenbecker, "I can imagine, you know." McLean, "That's what you imagine?" Ellenbecker, "That's what I would imagine. Would you want to?" You know, then you go into page 16. McLean, "And like I said, I am putting you in a tough spot, and I know she's probably a friend, friend of yours, and she's a nice enough person." Ellenbecker, "Yeah, you know, my boss, you know, friend, just a nice person." You know, it's weird how she led with boss. Going down, McLean, "Okay, so, was she mainly just using this address so she had, or so she could keep her job?" Well, Ellenbecker, "Well, that's part of the requirement, yeah." I apologize for going through this, I'm sure everybody's read it. But the next one, McLean, "So, would you consider this her permanent residence?" "Not anymore," Ellenbecker. McLean, "No." "Okay, prior to March, would this have been her permanent residence?" Ellenbecker, "Well, I wouldn't say so." Going down, McLean, "Sure, sure. So, when you, when she first filed, she was living here more then?" Ellenbecker, "Probably not, because she didn't know if she won. She ran unopposed."
Totally.
How, I mean, Ms. Ellenbecker, anyway, I'll stick to the facts.
Thank you.
That's it on that one.
Okay, I'll give you a break.
Perfect.
If we turn to page 81, Minnesota statutes, determination of residency, highlighted three areas, number three, number six, and number seven. An individual does not acquire residence in any precinct of this state if the individual is living there only temporarily, without the intention of making a precinct home. So, temporarily. But if she's an elected official, just like all of us sitting up here, our residency has to be in Benton County, can't be temporarily. My opinion, I'm not an attorney or a lawyer, you know, that can be taken either way. Number six, except as otherwise provided in this section, an individual's residence is located in the precinct where the individual's family lives, unless the individual's family is living in that precinct only temporarily. Once again, temporarily. What's temporarily? How do you define that? I mean, that can be, I can't even explain this. I'm just a little frustrated. Four years of hearing all this stuff and coming up and getting all this information. Number nine, the mere intention to acquire new residence is not sufficient to acquire, is not sufficient to acquire a new residence unless the individual moves to that location, moves to that location. Moving to a new location is not sufficient to acquire a new residence unless the individual intends to remain there. You know, those are the three things that were highlighted about determination of residency.
Mr. Chair? I'm going to elaborate on that one a little bit more. I was going to save it till the end.
I knew you were. I wanted to get something in.
This is, you know, this information came to me from an individual, and it was in our, it was in our possession a long time. And it has to deal with the property taxes. It says right on the property tax that they homestead. And if you print off things, print off items from websites, including our own Benton County website, it says, "Homestead credit. You must occupy the property as a primary place of residence. Token occupancy does not qualify." Then it goes requirements. You must qualify as outlined above. You will be required to show proof of ownership and may be required to show proof of occupancy." That was right from our own website, Benton County. Then you go into the state website, it says qualifications. Occupy the property as sole primary residence, sole or primary residence. Then you go into another website, and it says, there's exclusions in here, and it says, "E, in case of property owned by a property owner who is married, the assessor must not deny homestead treatment in whole or in part if only one of the spouses occupy the property and the other spouse is absent due to (1) marriage dissolution proceedings, (2) legal separation, (3) employment or self-employment in another location, or (4) other personal circumstances causing the spouse to live separately, not including an intent to obtain two homesteads classification for property tax purposes." Then it goes on to say, "To qualify under clause number three, the spouse's place of employment or self-employment must be at least 50 miles distance from the other spouse's place of employment, and the homestead must be at least 50 miles distance from each other." The moral of the story is, if they homesteaded and she's still on the property tax, that's supposed, according to these, supposed to be the primary residence. How can you have two primary residences, one for your job and one for your taxes? Unless I'm reading this wrong.
Mr. Chair? Two things I got out of that is, one, that you can't claim property or homestead credit tax on a rented property.
Right.
The other part that I, and I'm not familiar with this, is that I can buy a farm in Morrison County, and I can have one of my kids or somebody else live there, and I can maintain homestead credit on that. But egg, egg, what?
It's under agricultural.
You know, I don't know if that's just an agricultural deal or...
It is. There's a huge, if you go through that, there's a lot of agricultural stuff.
Yeah, you know.
And you could homestead, you could homestead that property even without a person on there.
Right, yeah.
So many townships.
Yep. So, and probably that's another thing that, you know, egg gets a break on, I don't know.
But getting back to this, but if you look at it, according to the long stuff I read on all these websites, there's actually fines and everything that would have to, in order for this to be Stock Rapids' primary address, you have to do things with the homestead, like, I believe you got to take your name off the homestead, it's got to qualify, I mean, there's a lot of qualifications and stuff. I'm not an attorney, I'm not legal, but just from me looking at it, none of that was done. Matter of fact, all of our personal data still says Becker address within our own county. And I think this, I'm stunned.
Monty, I have a question, and I know, and I know I'm not going to let you speak, Mr. Miller, but I'm sure you're going to email me this afterwards. But when our attorney recuses himself of this and works very closely with the auditor treasurer, and we've got these issues coming up like this, does he got to recuse himself from that too? I'm trying to understand, you know, the political end of it.
Okay. Well, if I just kind of recount, the chain of events is, and it's actually, there's an email...
I didn't have the page number in front of me, sorry.
There's an email here at the end, it's actually the very last one, it's page 83.
Oh, how would I forget that one?
This is in December of 2021, and the original purpose of the email was to inquire whether or not this matter could be discussed in closed session. And at the time, our county attorney, Phil Miller, said that he did not believe it qualified it. and at the time, our county attorney Phil Miller said that he did not believe it qualified as a closed session subject. And it was at that time that he recommended that we seek outside counsel. And, uh, that was the point where we made this, we made contact with, with Scott Anderson and began consulting with him. Uh, and so I, I believe, since that time, we've heard in, at various times and places that the, our county attorney's office has, has conflicted out on this matter. Uh, and, uh, again, you, you could, you continued to obtain counsel from, uh, from Scott Anderson.
Mister Chair.
It didn't answer my question, but that's fine, go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna follow up on this.
Please do.
Um, in, in the October sixth letter from, uh, from, from, or to Sergeant McLean from Sherburne County Chief Deputy.
Sheriff, what page, John?
Uh, fifty-two.
Thank you.
Samuel.
Wertheimer.
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 The second. You know, it, it, it clearly looks at the first thirty days prior to the election. I had went back and asked, um, County Attorney Kathleen Heaney from Sherburne County to relook at this and relook at it past, you know, the thirty days. And that was ob- that was ultimately, um, they responded and, and said that it, you know, it, they weren't gonna follow any, follow up on any more charges or anything like that. So. But at the bottom of this October sixth, twenty twenty, letter, that was copied to, um, Sherburne County Sheriff's Department records, uh, Phil Miller, Benton County Attorney, and Troy Heck, Benton County Sheriff. It says, it would be up to Benton County authorities to determine if any possible civil action would be applicable as a result of the evidence obtained in your, Mr. McLean's investigation. If we've got our county attorney that's conflicted out, our county sheriff sent, you know, i- i- they couldn't do the investigation. Who are the Benton County authorities that should have got this? I think it should have been the past board. And thus, this, this is very pertinent information that should have been forwarded from departments within. You know, and, and I'm frustrated on it, go ahead.
If I just add one thing, I, I know the questions come up about, well, when did the county board know about this?
Right.
And the first time that I certainly, and I think board members, learned about the Sherburne County investigation was in the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one memorandum from Michelle Meyer to the board regarding this, this subject. It's on page fifty-four. And it's on, it's in paragraph two, it says, it says, "An investigation in this matter was done in two thousand twenty by the Sherburne Sheriff's Office. Criminal perjury charges were declined. While the county attorney, while the office declined to pursue criminal charges, the attorney noted that their decision to decline did not preclude civil action if warranted." So again, this is the first time that we learned about this investigation was in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. When, when Michelle Meyer referenced it in her, in her letter to the board.
Okay, but that's what I'm hearing as an issue, Commissioner Kapinski, is that the year prior.
Nobody knew about it.
Nobody knew.
Nobody knew about it. Nobody even knew about the investigation.
And they're the ones who would have had to deal with it.
Yes. And I've talked to past board members, and they are not happy about it.
And I should, if I can mention, Mister Chair, I know to Michelle's credit that she, she, she says in her, in her letter here, says, "If the board is interested in pursuing this matter further, I do have a copy of the public data relating to the Sherburne County investigation, I invite that to the board." And I think some people might say, well, why didn't the board ask for it then? And, and I, I think, speaking for myself, Michelle says no, there were no perjury charges, uh, issued. Uh, no concerns were raised. So I think, and we had heard from the Otter Treasure herself that she had residency. So I think most folks thought.
We're good to go.
There's no issue.
But the problem with that, Monte, is that it was also stated that that doesn't preclude that existing county board from moving ahead with civil charges. And I don't think that that information was presented to that board.
Well, for me personally, I guess I assumed that our county attorney's office had reviewed the file. And if they had seen something, they would have let the board and me know. So I was not inclined to ask for the file. It wasn't like negligence or just being lazy. Just, there was no inclination to ask because it, we assumed things were fine.
Like, like the previous board member said, which I was sitting up here at that time, I guess it's okay to rent an apartment. Okay.
For a hundred dollars, by the way.
And, and it is, but it's still gotta be your primary residency, though. There, there's a difference between just renting an apartment and also keeping your primary residency there. You know, there is a difference, you know, and, and you're right, I had two other previous commissioners call me too, and just shook their head and were disappointed. They were just disappointed. You know, that we couldn't have, or, and, and maybe some of it falls on us, that we did not ask the right questions, you know. But, but the information is here.
Yep, regardless, there's eighty-four pages of it.
You know, it's eighty-four. Go ahead.
Mister Chair, if we agree that our Benton County Attorney's Office had this information, even dating back to July of two thousand twenty-one, Ms. Myers came to us. You know, one of the things that I have a very serious problem with is the memo from Mr. Miller going to the county board, as well as to at least one member in the public. Basically, going through the whole residency issue, this is pages seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven. But the only thing that was referenced really in this whole deal was that she, you know, that, that they're not pursuing any criminal charges.
And, and I'm assuming the criminal charges would be perjury.
Yeah, but there, there was no reference to, you know, any of the, you know, eye-raising information in the whole investigation report, which I think Sergeant McLean definitely thought it was, uh, he didn't find any residency, according to him.
Well, and again, Sherburne County determined there was no criminal charges to be filed. But it communicated about the possibility of civil action by the past board. And the past board, to my knowledge, was not presented that information.
And when, when you look at, when you look at the timeframes, this goes back to two thousand eighteen, October. Right? There's questions there. Even, even Sergeant McLean brought it up. Then you look at the cell phone records from July to July of two thousand nineteen through April thirtieth of two thousand twenty, there's little to no usage in her Sock Rapids' address. You, you just have to, you have to look at that and then go, she was then basically told to leave from her apartment or her room from Ms. Ellen Becker in May first.
A day.
She didn't gain residency back.
Nine months.
For another nine months. So we're looking at over, over two years, or two years. Not just from nineteen to two thousand twenty, this is, this goes to, I don't know if it was December or.
January.
January of twenty-one. So there's a significant amount of time.
So essentially, July of nineteen to January of twenty-one.
Yeah.
Mister Chair, I think on the, the residency thirty days prior to the election would have been really tough for the county board to get a handle on that thirty days.
Right.
There's just not enough information. We were basically taking Ms. Ingram's word that she established residency on that. We didn't have anything available as to say that, you know. She, you know, basically changed her driver's license, wrote her registration, everything that would look to be on the up and up. And I guess from that point, you'd have probably thought, well, we'll take care of everything else, you know. I do have, you know, I, I agree that she knew long before that, that she was running unopposed and would get reelected. I mean, the assumption should have been there, that we needed to start moving forward on other aspects of this, which we didn't.
In, in my, my closing, oh, go ahead.
I, I got plenty.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Beth.
Um. I just have a question on rental, the rental, uh, no, the vehicles. It's, we have the title that's there, but was there any other investigation into how, um, insurance or how she gets her, um, filings for the license renewal every year? How much was looked into? There's so much lacking that I.
These are questions, yeah, these are questions we can't answer. We don't have that information, you know, for us.
There wasn't a big investigation into this. And, um, I also have questions about the residencies that I, we don't have answers to. I know that the, um, residents had been pursuing more, and we didn't hear anything. We got no response out of that until we got, finally got pushed, and Mr. Miller was contacted, and then we, then we finally got going on this.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
After this, I'm done, I promise. I, I won't promise, but.
It is what it is.
I'm just going back to primary residence. And if you look at the affidavit that she did when, when, Ms. Inman did when she went to be an elected official. And what the homestead classification is. There's, there's, I mean, there's some significant issues here, in my opinion. I, I'm no legal person, but it sure looks like she has two primary addresses. And you can't do that. And being an elected official, using one address and getting tax breaks on another. It just doesn't look good.
Yeah, we, we all, we all side, we all signed on all those affidavits saying that we were, you know, a residency of Benton County. Let's be a resident of Benton County, all public officials, you know. I mean, we have eight of us, five, sorry, six, seven, eight.
Five.
You know. It, it seems like seven out of eight are always, they're doing their job. It's just in question, the, the eighth one, with all of these things brought up. Monte, can you please fill us in of what Mr. Anderson said our three options were?
Sure. So, uh, it's described as an initial option that, uh, that Attorney Scott Anderson dis- dis- uh, offered to the board. And essentially, it's where the board would act, uh, under Minnesota statutes to declare the office vacant. And then the board has authorization to fill vacancies under Minnesota law. I know Scott had some concerns about that because, uh, there's not an abundant case law on, on this particular course of action. So it's difficult to predict what a court's gonna do in the absence of lots of case law. So that was the first one, declaring, essentially declaring the office vacant. Uh, he did say that a course could result in, in court action where the person in question would challenge it, and then the board would be involved in litigation, then. Second one is, uh, he uses the Latin term quo ruranto, um, I'm sure I mispronounced it. Uh, a quo ruranto, action, challenging the person's right to hold the office. He describes it, it's an appro- this is, he's citing, uh, he's citing the Minnesota statute. Says an appropriate action to challenge a person's title or to or qualifications for office or the constitutionality of a statute in which a person holds office. And, uh, I think that's the one he would tend to steer you towards. Uh, so in essence, the board would authorize its attorney to file, file, uh, an action in district court. And it's got, tells us, then that would lead to the discovery phase, uh, which would involve depositions of individuals under oath. Uh, so that would, that, that would be the process there. He talks about a third one, and he says it really is an accounting board option. It's a petition and hearing process. So apparently, uh, registered voters can, uh, petition, uh, the county to have essentially a recall election, um, uh, for a person in office. And he sets forth an elaborate process for that. You must have a petition contain at least twenty-five percent of the number of persons who voted in the last election, uh, to bring the matter to a public vote. Uh, so that's a petition process. So he, he tends to steer you probably towards the one, the second one I mentioned, the quo ruranto action. Uh, where again, it's, it's the board, uh, file, file suit in district court, and then you go through, again, the deposition discovery process.
Is, is civil action the definition of that?
That's my term. Well, obviously, it's, anything that's non-criminal, I would describe as civil. So that's, that's how I would, I would describe it, you know. And I think that's an important point to stress. And then there's been a lot of discussion about, okay, there, there were no criminal charges and so on and so forth. And, and, okay, we hear that. This is the civil side of the matter, uh, and it's not, not the criminal side. That's where the board, of course, would have the ability to act is on the civil side. So those are the three.
Okay, thank you, Monte. Uh, is there any further discussion with the board? If not, I will, uh, go ahead.
I got a question. So if, Monte, if we chose to do a civil action and, you know, depositions and stuff like that come out, what are the, if, if something was gained in those, uh, depositions, I believe Mr. Anderson had said something on that. And that's where it, the potential, um, uh, criminal charges could come back, or not?
I must say, Commissioner Kapinski, I don't recall, and, and I, I can, and I will ask.
Yeah, if you could ask.
Question, right, to be clear on that subject, what, what could arise as a result of a, of civil deposition process? I'll find out, yep.
Cause I think that's what he was getting at when.
Okay.
Additional investigation.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm, go ahead.
Um, also, that would give us, it says we would be able to get more information, like, well, the questions that we don't have answered.
I believe.
Some need to know.
I believe so. I mean, I think that would be one purpose served is, is, is hopefully, many of your questions would be answered through that process. That's right, because individuals would be testifying under oath.
Thank you for that clarification, Monte. At, at this time, my opinion is I'm tired of pushing this under the rug. It, it is time for us to dig into this and get to the bottom of this, so we can end this ordeal, one way or another. In, in my opinion is to go number two, cause I'm not, what's that, what is the word, duo? Short-term civil action, right?
It's spelled Q U O W A R R A N T O. And, uh, this Scott describes it as a common law cause of action and a statute of action which may be brought against a public official.
And, and that's the one that Mr. Anderson, uh, recommended to the board.
Right. It goes on to say, uh, through a quo ruranto proceeding, an elected official is required to, quote, "show before a court of competent jurisdiction by what authority the exer- the official exercises to challenge right or privilege of office."
Okay, so quo warranto.
Mister Chair, if I, I think it goes without saying that if that's a choice, a road we decide to go down, that's gonna consume some considerable resources and time. With that said, I, I think that's part of our job.
Mister Chair.
Mister Pop.
Um, I know number one seemed to be the most expensive course to go for me. And the number three part would probably be the most apprehensive, you know, let the public decide. But the timeframe, if we were talking election in two years, I would say go with number three, but we're talking, you know, an election that's gonna happen in the fall, so that's not, not really applied to this. So I would have to agree that if we're gonna do something, number two is probably the, the option to go.
Mister Chair. I've also talked with Scott Anderson, and he asked him, like, if we decided to go with that number two, if he'd be willing to be our representative, and he said he would.
Yeah, he sent a memo saying he'd be willing to do that, or it'll just cost us money.
Yeah. Mister Chair. Any idea of how, what kind of dollars we were talking about?
Thirty-five to sixty-five thousand.
Mister Chair. I, I think this should have been handled way back in two thousand twenty, and I feel horrible for the pass board not knowing about this. I'm, I'm in agreeance with option two. I, I know it's going to cost the county money, but we got to put an end to this, in, in my opinion, as, as you said.
Monte, go ahead, Commissioner Pop.
Thirty-five to sixty-five thousand, that's a lot of money, and I'm not real sure how many of the general public that are out there really care. I think there's a whole lot of people, we, we hear about the people that think it's wrong, but if you talk to ten people, I wouldn't be so sure that seven of those ten people would say, "I don't care where she lives." And if you're going to spend sixty-five thousand, we have to take a good, hard look at that, that we're spending their money. I, I think there's some people do care, and, and they're rightfully so, but I think there's a large portion out there that really, really don't care about, she's doing her job, she's done this, she's done that. And when you start tying big dollars to it, that's where I think you may get some opposition, like, you know, let the election play out. There could be all kinds of things that would come forth after that.
I, I can tell you, in my district, I would, I've never heard the end of this, ever since I've been a commissioner, in my district, in my district, and I still hear about it.
This has been my number one-
Commissioner Kapinski-
This has been my number one, I mean, people-
And I mean, since the article in the paper came out, I heard some about it, but not huge amount.
Everybody I talked to are appalled.
Yeah, so this has been a number one issue, even for me, since day one of being a commissioner. I had to deal with this the whole time, you know, being half my district, or most of my district is half of Sauk Rapids.
Right.
You know? And then Commissioner Kapinski, I won't speak for you, but when he got elected, now we both got in year full, day in and day out. And it's been ongoing for a very, very long time. And there's only one way, in my opinion, to get rid of this issue, is to take a look at it, figure it out, and take care of it.
Well, and, and with that said, Mr. Chair, it's not our, we didn't create the issue-
We didn't create- And that's right, yep.
And for me, it becomes a, more of an issue of, of principle on whether or not we're going to move forward, and I certainly understand the dollars amount, I don't like it either, not one dollar of it, especially when it wasn't something that we did.
Right.
Yeah, I, I feel sorry for the new commissioners, because the senior commissioners or the past commissioners, I think, from the two that talked to me, said they would have acted back then. That's what they said, that's what they told me. They would have acted immediately back then. You know, and Commissioner Pop, you know, you were on it too.
Yep. Yeah, and I'm definitely, you know, I, I have a little trouble with the timeframe, I guess.
Yeah.
Because of where we sit, you know, what are we, ten months, eight months away from an election, spend sixty-five thousand dollars and-
Well, that'd be the worst-case scenario, but-
Yeah.
Well, I guess it gets to a decision, if you want an answer or not.
Well, Monte, what do we need to do?
Um, I guess just possibly a motion to give me some direction on what you'd like Scott Anderson to do.
Okay. I'm-
Sorry, Mr. Chair, if we choose to move ahead, how are we paying for it, and from where?
Well, you know, you've got your Commissioner's Suspense account, so that, that probably can cover it. I'm sorry, that's, that's an alternative for the contingency account.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This is a state statute, and I would make a motion that we would pursue. It's option number two.
Number two, yeah.
Quo, quo warranto.
Scott Anderson's assistance to help this disclosure, to get this solved.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, just for clarification. It'd probably be best interests of the board to have Mr. Anderson on board, being he's done some of this already, looked at this-
That's a question back, I mean, back to you, are you comfortable with Scott as your continued advisor on this subject?
Yeah, and I think that was part of the motion, the second, was include him.
I just wanted clarification, make sure we're all okay with that.
And we can also, if we choose to change that later on, we just have to come back to the board and, and make that appropriate change. Okay?
Okay, we got a motion and a second to move forward on this. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Monte, you'll be addressing Mr. Anderson about this then, for us?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next, motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, eleven thirty-six. We'll take a couple-minute break, Chris.